Good afternoon, I'd like to call Finance Department in order. We'll start off with the flag please.
Apologies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to the approval in a minute, I'd like to introduce our new head of Human Resources, Julie Dow. For those of you who don't know her, she's available to help anybody at any time. Stop in and see her. Welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you so much. Happy to be here.
Any questions?
Yeah.
First by legislator Welber, second by legislator. Let's see, first. Dan is here. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you. Resolutions have been this month. So we'll start right off with public safety number one. Resolution authorizing budget modification probation department, STSJP, interactive journal. First by legislator Welber, second by legislator Walpole. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's. I still have one thing. What is that acronym for?
You asked that, didn't you?
I did.
I, actually, I can never remember. Supervision and Treatment Services for Juveniles.
One more time?
Supervision and Treatment Services for Juveniles.
Thank you. I was just curious what that was about. PS2, resolution authorizing reclassification of three positions in the correctional facility administrative office. First by legislator Welber, second by legislator Lackwood.
Cost neutral.
Cost neutral. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. PS3, resolution authorizing creation of two positions and deletion of two positions in the correctional facility. First by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Holtz. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. PS4, resolution creating a nurse practitioner, part-time position and medical social worker position correctional facility, Sheriff's Department. Move it, first by legislator Welber, second by legislator Favela. Any discussion on this? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. On infrastructure. Resolution authorizing a New York State DOT grant establishing capital project to construct a 10 bay tee hangar at the Asriel County Airport. First by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Twist. Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Any, any questions, discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. We have IT3, I'm passing around, some paperwork on it, needs to be amended. Right, first by legislator Walpole. Move for discussion, second by legislator Holtz. Do you want me to make a guess?
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend by legislator Welber. Second by legislator Walpole. We had to add, huh? Oh. No. What's that? I am. We had to put in some wording for, this was for the OTAS.
Yes, we had to, in order to get this bridge paid for through OTAS money, we've had to shut down some of our capital projects that were on OTAS that we finished, we took out existing money, as you can see, Coast Moneys won that money and brought that back so we could take this bridge totally out of OTAS.
Right, that's what was the wording in that. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Kerry's. Now, as amended.
Yes, sir. So does that, maybe better for statement, does that clear out all of our OTAS for bridges under, or do we still have more OTAS?
Right now, the way it stands, we're out of it.
Thank you.
Four bridges, I should say.
Right, four bridges, yeah.
Okay.
Well, there could be a little bit left in that one first.
Well, we did, right.
I get that, I just.
Right, what's open now would be all that we have.
Okay, now, on resolution, on resolution IT3, as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's. Thank you. Okay, IT4. We also have an amendment on IT4. Okay. Move by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Welber. We had to, we had to change just the account numbers, the accounting numbers, just to put it all in line, nothing major. Very moving, so, we have a second, so, move to amend, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's, as amended, with the new proper numbers, all in favor? Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you, we're all set. IT5, resolution authorizing budget modification and transfer funds from insurance recovery fund into highway street equipment.
Seconds.
First by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. IT6, resolution authorizing budget modification facilities and technology. First by legislator Lackwood. Second by legislator Walpole. I know. Second, kind of Mexico. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
What are the account numbers?
For on IT6? So we have to do an amendment on that?
Make a motion to amend the resolutions, whatever number it is. Now, second.
Okay, I have a first by legislator Twist and a second by legislator Welber. To amend to the correct account number. For facilities and technology, correct? Okay, thank you very much. As amended, on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's. On the original resolution, as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. EDP, we had nothing on the agenda this month. Health Committee, HE2, resolution authorizing budget modification, Health Department, New York State Regulation Staff Compliance Due to the measles outbreak. Move it. First by legislator Welber, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. HE5, resolution authorizing correction of titles in the budget of two positions in the Health Department. First by legislator Walpole. Second by legislator Lackwood. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. Okay. Human Services, had nothing on the agenda, so we'll go right to FP1. Resolution awarding professional services contract, Treasurers Department Investment Analysts. First by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Welber. I'm going to turn the meeting over to our treasurer for the moment. We have a small presentation that I'd like everybody to see on this, and we have, Kevin, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, actually, I just want to say, you know, thank you for the support in the past because now that we can actually do a lot of process controls and procedures that are coming in line, this is one thing that has not been changed in several, several years, is our investment policy. So what I thought about doing, talking with other treasurers that utilize this company that they found a great success utilizing the methodology and how to reinvest or invest some of our, our money. So what I did was, as it states here, they put a proposal together, it's a five to one, it's a $9,900 cost to get a report. If they find it's five to one ratio, so they can find us at least $50,000, then obviously it covers our costs. If they can, it's free. So there, it's, it's pretty much a win-win, no lose situation in regards to getting a report. It's kind of what I called a report card in my simple mind. It's showing us where, what we have, how we have it now, our investments, and where we can go and maybe generate some more revenue in the future. It's not taking millions and millions of dollars, it's not leaving out the one person to steal this group, but the plan, when you review it, you decide where you want the money to go. It's not evidence that this company, they just give you options. So, and again, I really stress that our investment policy is old. I don't know when the last time it changed, it changed, Steve probably was here when it changed. But, you know, if we, you know, we look back on, and the reason it changed from, from some history is, I guess the investments were so-called like some, but it felt like they could do junk bonds. And unfortunately, they tightened, you know, that didn't go very well, obviously, so you have to, they tightened up so much that the bond market is a good market and it's safe in some areas, but we can't even use, utilize that. So hopefully this company will come in, review our investment policy, give us ideas, as well as where else we can make some. And yes, they are, they don't do it for free, so we know there's some charges down the road if we decide to utilize their ideas. I had two gentlemen here, I actually told them we might have to wait, because it's going to probably be a half hour, hour, whatever, to get to them, but today went really fast. There's Alex and Peter from Three Plus One to answer any questions, discuss it. These, these four slides are pretty, pretty intense, and I'll turn it over to either one of you guys.
Or both. Or both. Whatever you want to do.
Obviously, Alex is the younger guy, so Peter was co-founder of the company many, many years ago. Alex has, has worked with other colleagues that I've discussed this option with, and he has performed by a lot of things. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Please. Thank you, thank you Kevin for inviting us here and for the committee allowing us to speak. Just to give you all a brief overview, quickly, of who Three Plus One is and what we do, and why we are different than most financial providers out there, the easiest way to give you that idea is to tell you who we are not and what we don't do. So it's important that you know that Three Plus One is not a bank, we're not looking to take deposits from the county, and we're not an investment advisor, we're not looking to pick spend investments, or to sell you a specific fund and tell you Three Plus One's going to pay you X, Y, Z in interest on, on your funds. We have no interest in taking fiduciary of public funds at any point in time, and that's why we are different than banks and investment advisors, because they are after the county's money, because that's how they make money. At Three Plus One, we're strictly a solutions company that's focused on data, and we have delivered six figures differences for every other county that we work with in New York State, counties like St. Lawrence, Genesee, Orleans, Chautauqua, and many others. And really, we look at your cash from a holistic picture, and the reason we're able to give this unique perspective is because of Peter's background and our other co-founders, Joe Lewison, their background both as career public officials, Peter's the president of a school board, and Joe's the treasurer of a water authority, but also they're all part of the government banking, they spent about 20 years in the government banking world. So on the next slide, we talk about the three different views of cash in the marketplace, and this is what we try to bring together for our public entity clients. I think I can maybe look through it on here. There you go. So there's three traditional views of cash in the marketplace, and we try to fuse all of them together to bring increased interest earnings to the taxpayers. The first view is cash flow, that's how you all see your cash. The second view is liquidity, and that's how your bank sees your cash. When the county writes a check, that money is, is gone in your books, but on the bank's side, that money's still there until someone cashes that check, and they're collateralizing those deposits until someone cashes that check, so that's still costing the bank money to collateralize some deposits. So that's a quick example of how liquidity is different than the cash flow that you currently see. And then the third view in the marketplace is how the market values your cash, and that's where we see a tremendous amount of opportunity to bring increased earnings, because the data that we provide can show you what value your funds should be attributable to. On the next slide, we're looking at.
This is my, this is a beta test, folks, too, because these papers are going away from me, so I'm going to be presenting a lot of my information up here, but.
If they're going to use it first.
Well, it worked out.
Thanks then.
I don't think it's free. Yeah, you can go ahead.
Spacebar.
Yeah. One more time. Thank you. So this is an example of the data that I'm talking about here. Imagine if we put all of the county's accounts aggregated into one graph, and that's what we're doing here. So the, to backtrack a little bit, the way that we get our data from our public entity clients, you only access to your bank accounts. That's the safest and most secure way to exchange data, because then you're all not sending statements to us across email. By giving us you only access, we're able to directly download the data that we need, but we don't have the capability to move funds or change anything at any point in time. And then we're able to aggregate all of your data and run stress tests on the county's cash, and this is the time horizon data that our reports give Kevin and the rest of the county staff, so they know what value and how much cash they have in the marketplace right now. So these different levels that you see, they have the different colors, each level there is associated with a different time horizon, which is the duration capability of your funds. So those funds in gold at the very bottom, where it says liquidity level four, if you can read that, those are the funds that you're least likely to need, if you really think about it, I'm looking at the graph. So these funds are, might be available for 24 to 36 months, depending on what our output is. And then each level is a different time horizon, going down to as short term as two to three weeks. And as the interest rate environment shows us, each different time horizon has a different value in the marketplace. So we've helped New York State counties maximize the value of their cash by showing them the time horizon of their funds, and it changes throughout the year, that's why we provide quarterly updates on that, and we make sure that all of our funds are earning as much as they should be at all times. And it's important to note, going back to the beginning, when I said we're not a bank, we're not an investment advisor trying to sell you any specific fund, we're a completely independent company, so we don't care where the funds are, we just care that they're earning as much as they should be. I'm not here to try to convince you to switch banks or to engage in a new investment relationship somewhere else, it does not matter to us, all that we care is that the funds are safe, which is why we conduct a full review of your investment policy and provide recommendations if we see that there are some procedures or investments on there that are not allowable on the New York State law, or some that are allowable that are not on the policy. We want to make sure that you have appropriate liquidity, which is why we do this analysis. And then last, we want to make sure that they're reaching appropriate value, and like I said, it does not matter to us where that is, whether it's at Chase, Key, Community Bank, or any investment out there, we just want to make sure that it's earning as much as it can be in the marketplace. And that independence status is why many counties have thought our service is very valuable, because you know when we come to the table, the recommendations, we're not motivated by any amount of money that we're going to earn by telling you this. If a bank comes to you with a product that might be helpful for you, I'm sure it would help the county and pay the county significant interest, but at the end of the day, banks have their own stakeholders, and they need to make sure that they're making an appropriate amount on the county, and we're able to give you an independent perspective of what that offers in the marketplace and what your peers are doing because of our network within New York State. On the next slide, if you don't mind, in there, we're showing an example of the deposit structure of a county that we work with from before our first report and then after a year of our services, and you can see how they were able to diversify their funds. When before, they did have some investments, some CDs out there, but they were struggling to probably figure out a timeframe for when they had most of their funds available on a monthly or completely liquid basis, where they were always available. After the implementation of our data and recommendations, as you can see, they have a much more balanced cash structure, where some funds are out for longer than 365 days, meaning they're earning a significant rate for that whole time. But then there are also funds coming to monthly, every quarter, and those funds are all earning different marketplace rates, but still maximizing the value available to the county without sacrificing any liquidity. So this is really what our goal is when working with entities, and it's not something that can be done in, in one swing, it's a continual process to make sure, and we're always trying to take baby steps, to identify the low hanging fruit that can be identified right away, and from our first report, we usually have recommendations that day where we can talk to a bank about trying out a new investment or using their accounts. But it is, especially with entity decisions, an ongoing process to make sure, because we don't want to do anything that you are uncomfortable with. And another important point is, we do not take fiduciary of any public funds, so we cannot make any decisions for you. As Kevin alluded to, we have no decision power whatsoever, that power completely stays in your hands. So while we may make a recommendation, you do not have to follow through with it, although we always back up our recommendations, and we conduct regular interviews with the county, so we make sure that we're only recommending things that fit your investment policy and that fit the treasurer's goals. If you say you're not interested in doing a certain thing, be sure we won't be recommending that again at any point in time. Next slide. Thank you. This just shows a little bit of how granular we can get between tracking all of your different accounts. I know you likely don't get to see everything put together like this too frequently, and that gives us a lot of flexibility to show you your data, your different means and different tables that you find most useful. So that's where a lot of our clients find our services very useful, is identifying specific accounts that might have significant opportunity, and that's how granular we can get down to tracking every single account and showing you what time of the year there is opportunity, so we can identify certain time periods where funds, maybe you should go out on a CD for three, four months, and always be sure when we know the county's going to need them. So this just shows you a preview of what some of our sports look like, and I just wanted to show how granular we can get between tracking every single account, so you know that we're looking in there every single minute, ready for what is available to the county. And the last slide just shows some of the results that we've had with New York State counties, and like I mentioned before, we have seen six-figure benefits with every county that we've worked with, because of the amount of funds that we're able to put to work that were previously idle in bank accounts or in underperforming investments that maybe could have been extended for longer periods of time. So at the end of the day, it's about giving you all the confidence to make your own decisions, and knowing that you're getting appropriate marketplace value on each one of those investment decisions, because of our marketplace expertise and our network within New York State, working with other counties and banks across the state. So there's a couple of different timeframes in these results, and I'm not going to read every one of them, but you can see even that county up in the top left corner, they were able to earn over $45,000 just in the first three months of implementing our services. So when I talk about a process, it can be, it is something that can be started, and the effects can be seen right away, while there are other things that may take more months, more time to implement, and as investments mature, the county's earnings just continue to increase, but we've seen significant interest increases with every county that we've worked with in New York State, and we hope to continue to do that. Any questions, anyone has one?
Anybody have any questions? See, okay, folks, there we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really, the big key, again, I think it's, it's kind of seeing what we are now and where we can be tomorrow. Again, when we come to, when a lot of people, the parlance comes to this meeting, it's to spend money, we don't have a lot of revenue streams that we can generate anymore, and I'm coming to it with an offer that there is a revenue stream that we may be underutilizing.
We had this, we had this discussion.
No, I just think this, you're absolutely right, Kevin, you've got to obviously in a place where, a good place where it needs to be to announce the times, and financially, you know, now is the time to really take a good hard look at this, and the committee will be, and it seems on every step of the way, it's one of the ones that are going to have to make any changes that come forward, so it sounds like potentially be seeing a good, you know, financial outcome from. And maybe they'll come back and say we're doing the right thing, and, you know, that's money well spent as well, make sure we're on the right track, because we do have a biggie to our taxpayers. So I know the initial cost is $9,900 for a year, and then, you know, if they don't make five to one on, or five to one on, if they don't make five to one, then it costs nothing, but what's, how much is it going to cost us in the future if we were going to do it for a year?
Because I can say for that percentage, you know, $250 per million or whatever, but.
Yeah, I see that here, is that, that's.
Yes, that's, that's the ongoing cost, and that's the reason we can't give you an exact estimate now, because we haven't seen your data. If we had the county's data, we could tell you exactly what it is, but we do charge $250 per quarter, per million dollars of calculated strategic liquidity, and that's the amount of funds that we're actually monitoring, helping you put to work and earn more on. So we do not charge on any funds that we can't provide a benefit on, plain and simple, while we are monitoring all of your cash, we're only charging on that strategic opportunity, where we're identifying opportunities for the county to do more.
That's what I was going to say. And again, you know, somebody brought up, you know, can we go over our P and everything? Methodology that this company's used over 30, 40, 50 years? How many years has it been?
About 25.
25 years? The methodology is kind of sole source, it's sole source, nobody else chooses it, so that's all of the other counties, like I confronted, it's just the word, that cost. So that's all the other counties, like I confronted, just the word got tossed into that bag.
Well, I have a first and a second. We've had some discussion. Is there anything else before we move forward? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Vacancy review. Hi there.
So first position I have to bring to the front forward, Simon discussing the fill of a part-time coaching theater. Basically, bring him up to the deputy's and position that they can take in March.
Okay. First by legislator Walberg, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Kerry, thank you. Next.
Highway has two positions, a hybrid supervisor and highway coordinator. They were both vacated in April for retirement purposes. And there are five or four other positions that are backfilled, so basically, they don't affect to promotional purposes for employee behind those vacant positions.
Motion, I have a first and a second to move Highway in a block.
That's including the temporary.
There's, I was just going to say, there's also a temporary position.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe a first and a second. First by legislator Walberg, second by legislator Twist, wasn't it? Was it your legislator Walpole? I'm sorry. Any discussion? Any questions for Lisa and Kevin? This is normal. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you.
HR, my department, has HR administrator, which was my previous position, requesting to fill that. It's a very important part of our department. And then also there's two positions, a trainee and a technician part-time, basically backfill for those promotional purposes behind that.
Moving as a block?
Yeah.
Okay. First by legislator Walberg, second by legislator Walpole. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you.
Thank you. Real Property, there's a temporary vacant position being brought forward. This position has been vacant since January of this year, and it's to fill in for an employee that would be going on vacation.
And this department's already down to previous years.
Yes. Well, yeah. So they can't really afford to down.
Right. First by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Halls. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Kerry, thank you.
South Basin's position, equipment at Camp Two. This employee's been out for a year, and now it's vacated, so it's to fill that position.
First by legislator Halls, second by legislator Walpole. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you.
And Board of Elections, an election clerk, due to resignation and basically mandated to be a representation of the county.
First by legislator Walberg, second by legislator Blackwood. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Kerry, thank you. Back to our department treasurer, Kevin?
Yep.
You got anything? We've got, we received your, Rob.
Yeah. Just stuff from all the TV, more, you know, the papers. Real quick, sales tax, we're down almost a half a month. And if you look at the report, there's pretty much all negatives. So something that we really sort of have to watch closely. It's not good right now.
Do you see it staying, trending the same, or do you...
We never know. The thing we've got to remember is the reimbursement to the town will become a lot of the sales tax. We don't know when. Right? The others going to be... First, they said, you know, the reimbursements for...
About eight.
Yeah, three. It was supposed to come on July. They said, no, no, it's coming out maybe, maybe around August, now maybe December. So that automated with that as well. So when, we don't know. Maybe they'll change their mind before session ends. Wish I could tell you why. Yeah, well, and you know, the county clerk mentioned about dealerships. Seems that appears to mean the dealerships are down a little bit, too. So there's some sales tax out there. Major, major sales tax out there, our vehicles are gone, our debts are gone. So when you see a decrease in those, that's a big gap.
Do your duty. Everybody here needs to go buy a new car.
So, so we'll just book you by a truck to give you the information. The reserve funds are also attached. There's the normal. Hopefully, we'll get it up on the TV stream. That way you can see it there instead of worrying about, it won't happen today, but I'm going to put it in a format. OJAS still does have some money, but it doesn't reflect what was done today. The name Oakville and Steve and Profit Dollars are working cleaning them up. So that should be ending pretty soon. And then the other reserves, the normal reserves show 9.1 billion auctioned balance. So you need to move money, and now it's replenished some. They're looking a little healthy. Any questions?
Any questions for Kevin?
Well, yeah, and I just got one on page two. We did meet with high school and colleges regards to the new process that we discussed last month. They're all on board. They're excited because now they have the process for Powell. I do our report that we did do a check, and with our rules now, about eight and a half percent of the students that actually were approved last year, eight and a half percent may have been declined. Eight and a half percent. That doesn't sound like a big number, but when you tell them $53, you're talking quite a bit hundreds of thousands of dollars. That could possibly be, just need to be looked at. So by the new policy and the practices, maybe we can see savings. I don't, I encourage people to go to college, but you know, they have to live in the county for us to pay. Well, so now the assessors today from schools, Real Property, about 30 people showed up, school assessors. Real Property did a great job explaining their policy and procedures moving forward. So we're all on the same page. What we go out and what we expect from them and what they expect from us, so it's an easier process here. And then we got to talk about this foreclosure. Nice, actually, there's a bill on the floor, I guess, as we say, about redoing the foreclosure policy that we currently have. I wasn't going to bring it up, but it seems like we've given a lot of traction, actually in Albany, and now a lot of the upper counties are saying, wait, it will definitely impact us in a very negative way. The state is looking at possibly try to say that, and it's all here, and I can get into really a lot of detail, let me just go to 30,000 foot level. You will let owners, if they miss a bill four years ago, we are not, this bill can make it so that we don't, we can't charge them. They can pay their current bill and still save them in a very simple form. It eliminates a lot of what we use as, like percentages and different things like that to get people to pay. So it's a downstate move. It's not upstate. It's not driven by upstate. And it will, there's ways that people could cheat the system. I'm not going to tell them now, tell you how to do it now. It opens up the can of worms. We will not be able to enforce foreclosure processes in this county if this goes through. So what I want to do is just bring to the committee, ask for suggestions if you want to, want to make a motion to accept this, or you want me to do, in the chairman do a letter, that's all they have to do. But you got to remember, in foreclosure processes, this year, right now, we started with 7,000 as I reported to the committee months ago. We sent out 3,000 notices to delinquent taxpayers. Of that 3,000, we actually had 1,600 remaining, 1,642 remaining that are still delinquent. Normal time of a year for us is about 700. So there's a lot of people that the county's going to have to pay for, and they hold for these towns, you know, when it could be changed from four to two years. This is not the time to change the foreclosure process in this county. So it's a lot of expense. We sent off for title searches now. They've all been sent off for title searches. And it's a lot of expense to postage and everybody went out for that. So like I said, it's not a great time to mess with foreclosure process. So, so like I said, if you want me to send a letter, you know, they got to make a movement before the end of session, which is like the 19th or 13th or whatever it is. Will it go? I don't know. If it does, it will definitely dramatically impact this county.
Thank you, Kevin. I think, I think we should. Should we do authorization to send a letter? Should we do an actual motion?
Make a motion to have the chairman draft the letter with the county treasurer of our opposition on this matter, and then also put forward the resolution.
Right. Because it's...
The only thing is, I don't know if the resolution's going to make it in time, is why I would say we should draft the letter.
Actually, fine with that. If you don't want to do anything, that's okay.
No, I think we should, I think we should at least get a letter sent out because it's not going, it won't make it. But again, we do session. Okay, I have a motion. You got a second by legislator Walpole. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Any opposed? Kerry, thank you.
I just want, one more thing, real quick, to help the TV work. And I just want, along with foreclosure, just want you to know there's something that's happened with all these people coming in. 2016, we did 205 contracts. Contracts, a little circle, pull people out of foreclosure, stops the process. They go into a payment agreement that takes two years. They pay it off as long as they stay current. 2016, we had 205. 2017, 319. Last year, we had 269, so we're definitely having the right direction, more people paying their taxes. And five months should be separated. Five months this year alone, we've already surpassed last year's in 304. What's going to happen is that these people are relying on this to save their houses, and they got to stay current on their own, their current taxes. My fear is that they're using this as a crush to buy more time. So that number will probably be within 500, which we normally have in our system, 700 total. One year alone, we've got 500 people under contract. We're making a difference. So, you know, just in the timeframe, long timeframe, they do, they pay them some interest, minimal interest, but it's on our bill right now. I just want to present that a little bit, just so you're aware that a lot of people are struggling, so I'll just keep you posted.
Thank you. Human Resources.
Hi, I put in your packet, there's various number of reports that have been there. We have a vacancy report. As of May 17th, we have up to 45 full-time positions that are vacant. Between, you're adding in the 2019 salary savings and the French savings and subtracting the annual leave payoffs. To date, as of May 17th, it's $1,087,300 savings that we're up to. Also included is the report for employee counts, including full-time, part-time, seasonal. And as of May 17th, there are 1,104 employees in the county. And as well showing the exam schedule and exam ratings for the votes that have been listed, but I can't say enough, so please, you know, push our families, friends, anybody you know, push our fans, we're airing out our current exam camps coming up in the fall. We have our patrol officer in here that we're getting ready to announce coming up that'll be given in September. Anybody interested, keep it's on our way. Drive it to our website for applications and all of our exam recruitments, and seats are right there.
Thank you. Any other questions we do? Very good. Any miscellaneous reports or business to Kevin?
Got one quick question. Anybody here that can answer? But the last two years, we had night meetings in July and August. I was wondering if that's something we're going to do this year as well.
That would be...
Chairman.
A chairman.
According to our rules, it has to go through the chairman to designate, and then we would have to go to the government.
Yes, government, of course. It goes through the chairman and the government, of course.
I believe we already have some of them set up.
This month.
This month.
And September, I think.
The one we have in the last guy.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can get with Jim, you can ask Jim, you know, chairman of the other, see if there's anything that's going through or check with, you know, government. Yeah, that doesn't go through here.
I know, that's why I made it.
Yeah, yeah, check with Jim. You can check with Jim, see what's going on with government. Okay. I look for the appropriate motion. Motion to adjourn, first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you, everybody.